I will please stand and say you pledge allegiance to the
Our party's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, why nation and God are one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, who called this show? Becky Curtis.
Here.
Julie Osmond.
Here.
Alexander Williams.
Here.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Here.
John Breckinridge.
Here.
We are now open our first public participation. If you have something you would like to discuss with us and have us listen to you, please hopefully come up to the front, sign with your address. You have five minutes to speak. All right, thank you. Next, we will do our consent agenda show. I am a motion to approve the minutes of the August 21st, 2023 regular session. Do I have an enter take a motion to approve the minutes? So move.
Say.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. It passes, five in favor, zero opposed. Next, our public consent agenda show. We have none. So then, that leads us to our city manager before Steve.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick items. The first one I have is based on upcoming schedules. I think I can get away on vacation from September 22nd to September 29th, as I talked to you about before. And during that time, we'll leave operations in Zach's capable hands here. During the discussions on September 18th, the Historical Preservation Society said that they would be able to come in and give a report on the Third Street buildings and what they are planning of. They'll be giving us a yearly update now, and that will be the yearly update for this year. We have the issue of the Eagle Lake land, the 98 acres that we bought. I met with seven of the eight real estate brokers in the city, and we notified the eighth so that everyone has them. We have signed agreements now with four, and a couple more are coming in. But a couple of them are working very aggressively on it. And so we're hoping that we will begin to get some offers or some action on that property. Next is Mayor Curtis. And I met with Congressman Graves at the airport on Tuesday afternoon. And we updated him on a number of our ongoing projects that we could always use help in. But mainly put from him was he wanted to tell us that there was money available for airports. And of course, we have an airport grant that we're talking about tonight. And there may be other airport projects we have. So he was very open that there's airport money to be had. So we'll be watching that very carefully. And then finally, I wanted to give you an update on Griffin Road. We had the opportunity this last week to meet with the project manager from Bright Speed Fiber. And that is a big deal. They have been notoriously tough to get a hold of. But they now are very open. And the manager there was there, gave us his name and numbers, glad to help us with this and any of the fiber projects we have. So that was very good for us. And we also talked to CP Activating about working with Spire on the gas line on the west side of the road. So it looks now like we're on track to get both of those things taken in September, and we can finish the paving up in October. So that is all I have, Mayor, unless I want to ask some questions or comments.
Any questions? So how long did it take you to find out if I could get a hold of somebody?
I speak.
Yes.
Well, I started out by calling the number that I found on the Internet. And I was talking to a gentleman with a strange accent. It turned out he was in Laos. And so I asked if there was somebody that he could give to me that would be in the United States. And he passed me on to a supervisor who was also somewhere in the Far East. And then I finally got a lady in Florida. And she said she would make sure that she got the local project manager in touch with him. Because the guy in Laos not only did not know where northeast Missouri was, he didn't even know where Missouri was. So we finally got in touch with him. And we now have the project manager, have his phone number, his email address. And he's talking with us, and I think we'll be able to get that done.
So the lady from Florida got you the contact?
She finally did, yeah.
She did, because I knew that took almost.
It was. It was a very interesting project, but we got it. Thank you.
All right, that's it. We'll move on to our assembly business. Our first review, our second review, final bill, final bill 2023-22.
Bill 2023-22, an ordinance approving the city of Cameron, Missouri budget of the ensuing fiscal year, October 1st, 2023, to September 30th, 2024.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-22 on a second and final review by roll call. So move.
Say.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
All right, that leads us on to the second and final reading of bill 2023-22.
Bill 2023-23, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Missouri, repealing current electric rates and establishing new electric rates for consumers of the Cameron Municipal Utilities.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-23 on a file, second and final review by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. We pretty much discussed this last time. Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
No.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
It passes, four in favor, one opposed. Next, our second and final reading of bill 2023-24.
Bill 2023-24, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Missouri, repealing the current water rates and establishing new water rates for consumers of the Cameron Municipal Utilities.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-24 on a second and final review by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed. All right, next, we have a second and final reading of bill 2023-25.
Bill 2023-25, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Missouri, repealing the current sewer use rates and establishing new sewer use rates for consumers of the Cameron Municipal Utilities.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-25 on second and final reading by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
That leads us on to a second and final reading of bill 2023-26.
Bill 2023-26, an ordinance authorizing the city manager of the city of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with firmer construction to complete the Cameron Community Park Phase Two improvements.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-26 on a second and final reading by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Our final second and final reading of bill 2023-27.
Bill 2023-27, an ordinance approving competition for the establishment of the Ryan Road Community Improvement District and directing certain city officials to take certain additional actions consistent therewith.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-27 on a second and final reading by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
We now move on to the new business. We have a public hearing. I will entertain a motion to enter a public hearing regarding a voluntary annexation of the MOTA group LLC. So move.
Say.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Mayor members of council, this public hearing concerns a voluntary annexation petition filed by all fee simple property owners in the area generally south of BB Highway, west of Packard Lane, and then somewhat east of, or west of 35. But there's a small strip excluded. The petition was filed pursuant to section 71.012 of the revised statutes of Missouri. Notice published in the paper regarding the annexation pursuant to the same statute. The Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the annexation pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the city of Cameron, where the Planning Commission recommended that the city council annex the property into the city limits. Again, pursuant to section 71.012, there are 14 days for property owners in the city to file objections. So this is the public hearing, and then 14 days from now would be when there would be the ordinance that the city council would actually, or could actually extend the corporate city limits to include the properties. And I'll stand for any questions that the city council may have.
Okay, so I just have, so am I right in that the cemetery that's across the road, that's already in the city limits?
Yes, you are correct. Section 71.012, I've said the statute like 15 times. Hopefully, everybody's got it now. Requires that for a voluntary annexation, the property be contiguous and compact to the current boundaries of the city. This property is contiguous and compact because it abuts the city limits, which go to right now, the center line of Packard Lane on the west side, and then modots right away on BB, which goes down. So the property essentially is already contiguous and compact to the city on two sides.
So is the other side of the road going to be in?
Yes, it is.
And do we have that in mind?
Yes, it is. I don't know if the voluntary annexation petition is currently in front of the council, but I do have it up here on my computer. And the legal description does include going to the middle of the section line, which the middle, or to the section line, which the section line is the middle of Packard Lane. And it is illustrated on the legal description map that is page four of the voluntary annexation petition. So yes, it is.
So then, is that road, since it's going to be annexed, since the whole road will be annexed now, will it be paved all the way down to the, whoever this is, all the way down to the end of the property?
So as of, if the city council does decide to pass the ordinance extending the city limits, the portion of the road to the southern end of the cemetery would be entirely within city limits. Then the eastern half, for the remainder of the Travel America property, would be in the city limits, which is similar to what has been the status of that road since the city annexed that cemetery in. Because half of that road has been, half of Packard Lane has been in city limits since whenever that cemetery was established. But so.
But we don't know if somebody paid for it.
Well, so the portion that is within city limits is subject to the city's adjacent road improvement fee, which means that the developer will have to pave that road when they come in to get a plan.
Okay, well, that was my next question. And will they pay for that?
It will have to meet city standards. And then if there's further discussion and the necessity arises to pave the other half of that road, they'll have to be in agreement with the special road district because that western half of the road, south of the cemetery, will be outside of the corporate city limits of the city and will be under the jurisdiction of the special road district.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? What's left out?
Thank you.
Give me just a second. I will entertain a motion to exit a public hearing regarding the annexation of. MOTA.
MOTA, yes.
So move.
Say.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I have the whole petition there currently on.
That petition is on file with the city clerk. So prior to the ordinance extending the city limits, any members of the council of the public can would fully see what we discuss regarding the eastern half of Packard Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we will be doing a full reading of bill 2023-28.
Bill 2023-28, an ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron, Missouri, to apply for a matching grant for the Missouri Department of Transportation and Aviation Section to fund runway improvements at the Cameron Airport.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2028, 23-28 on a first reading. So move.
Say.
Discussion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We've talked about this a while. And what we're talking about here is doing $70,000, which is our 10% of the MAC, 10%, which is our match, for the engineering work to be done for the airport. And I'm going to ask airport manager Eric Evans to come up and explain a little bit about the need for that, how it's going to be done.
Probably all you guys already heard, at the finance meeting we had, the need and the handout I gave, you probably explained it pretty well, I think. Well, what against on the runway and why we have the need and the funding sources we have. I don't know if all of you are aware that we do have another source outside what we're applying for now that through Congressman Graves' office, which we've applied for, we still have basically congressional approval for that money. And the only difference, we think, is that we're not sure whether or not there is or is not a match for that same money. For the, and this is for the bigger project, the actual construction. This application here doesn't necessarily tie us into the 10% match if we, by chance, were able to get the other money. So we're in a fortunate situation. We've got two avenues for the back, basically same part of money. And I just don't know, Senator Congressman Graves' aides do not know at this point that question about the match. So we're kind of setting a limit with that. But to move with progress, to make progress on it now, we're going to go ahead and apply for this grant here for the design and engineering portion of it.
Because there's a deadline that we need to meet, correct?
Say then.
Because there's a deadline that we need to meet.
Essentially, and I still haven't gotten 100% word on what that deadline is. I do want to move out, and the FAA does have a cycle that they go through for projects, basically, I'm beginning to end. And so we're trying to hit that cycle, basically, as well. And what this also allows us to do is to get a tentative allocation letter from the MOAT and FAA, basically, say that you should approve for this money. And then we can go ahead and, if we choose to go ahead and go with a scoping meeting and with the engineers ourselves, to figure out what the total scope is of the project and who might be involved with it as well, as far as construction.
I'm just going to add that I think we left it off at the finance committee meeting. That we're going to do this and a budget adjustment in October. But after the meeting and discussion, it was decided that it should probably do sooner rather than later. If we can do it, we'll just get it done.
Yes.
Get in before any other applications.
In a phone conversation, Stephen had with Mr. Shea, who was in the meeting with Senator Congressman Graves and his aides, basically posed the question, is this, if we go after this discretionary money through the FAA and MOAT, do, does that lock us out of his rule? He didn't know for sure. He didn't think it did. And see, if he doesn't think it does, he is. He, in a conversation I had after the airport meeting, I kind of asked that question to him. He said he didn't think that, on one hand, we don't want to turn it down if offered because it could, you know, who knows what in the future. And he alluded to the fact that that money could still be set aside for even future projects. So I'm not 100% certain on that.
Yes, and he recommended, this was Shea from Congressman Graves' office, recommended that we apply for the grant because then we get the grant, and something may come about later. But he didn't want us to not do the grant and then find out we don't get the earmark. And never quite sure what might happen in Congress. But this way, we're in for the grant.
I just have one question. Did Senator Graves fly in?
No, he drove.
Okay, because sometimes he usually doesn't. He was acting of a target.
He is a part, and he's been to all air shows. He's actually performed at our air show. So nobody, nobody close to a player flies in this. In fact, we told him to get ahold of him and that we have a room for us.
Yeah, he didn't.
By chance, if we have a smaller show, maybe he'll be involved with that.
Any other questions?
Hope that filled any gaps you had.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to pass bill 2023-28 on a first reading. So move.
Say.
All those in favor of passing bill 2023-28? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. I will entertain a motion to suspend or pass bill 2023-28 on a second reading by roll call. So move.
Say.
Discussion. John Breckinridge.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Osmond.
Yes.
Alexander Williams.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler.
Yes.
That leads us on to resolution 2023-36.
Resolution 2023-36, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the third amendment to the solid waste collection agreement with R&amp;W Container for residential waste collection.
I will now entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023-36. So move.
Say.
Discussion.
Yes, Tad has been talking to R&amp;W, so Tad, you can give us a rundown on that.
Yeah, this is just agreement between the city of Cameron and R&amp;W Container, the solid waste, solid waste collection rates will remain the same at $17 per unit for the next two years until September 30th, 2025.
Good news?
Yeah.
That's huge, no price increase.
Anything else?
Any questions? The one that changed we had on there was we did add on the new community park.
Thank you.
If there's any other questions, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of passing resolution 2023-36? So go ahead. Aye, say aye.
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 All opposed, sorry.
No, it's fine. You're right for me, and I was waiting.
Okay, so I take one minute of time, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, it's the same, I remember, but yeah, they're each separate resolutions. Okay, all right. We're going on to resolution 2023-37. Resolution 2023-37, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Cameron, Missouri, to accept property located on Northland Drive as public right-of-way, Pilate Family Trust. I will entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023-37. On motion, so move.
Say.
Discussion.
Okay, we have three of these. Tad, you've been working on, I'm going to ask you to come up and just come up, and you can stand up for all three of them and answer any questions that we've got.
I'll go back. Any questions that you have?
Well, for those of you that are watching and not having a gym in front of you, you might be exploring what this is about.
Basically, it's the right-of-way permits for the temporary construction reasons along Northland Drive.
These are for the permanent.
Oh, they are the permanent, sorry. Yeah, these are for the permanent, sorry.
So they're basically just pro-rooms.
Right.
Okay, okay. We're actually taking some of their land and putting the sidewalk on it.
Correct.
I think one of them was for sidewalk, and the other two were for actual street right-of-way. I think, but I think it delineates that in actual, in documents, which is rich. Or any other questions for Tad? All those in favor of passing.
Hey there.
Passing resolution 2023-37, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, now we move on to resolution 2023-38.
Resolution 2023-38, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Cameron, Missouri, to accept property located on Northland Drive as public right-of-way, Bretanji LLC.
All right, I will entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023-38. So move.
Say.
Discussion.
And of course, one of the reasons we want to get these done is because this is the improvement to Northland Drive, want to get this done because, of course, that's the entry to the new ballparks and soccer fields that we want to get done.
I think that we did. All right, so we'll move on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. Next, we're going to resolution 2023-39.
Resolution 2023-39, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Cameron, Missouri, to accept property located on Northland Drive as public right-of-way, Carney Development and Investments Inc.
I will entertain a motion, a motion to pass resolution 2023-39. So move.
Say.
Discussion.
Pretty much, it's pretty much said.
All those in favor, passing resolution 2023-39, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thanks, Evans.
All right, next, we're moving on to the last resolution. First of all, it's resolution 2023-40.
Resolution 2023-40, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Missouri, to authorize regrading the public works director position in the city of Cameron, salary majors, approving the amended job description process.
I will entertain a motion to pass resolution 2023-40. So move.
Say.
Discussion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. When we had done this before, and we did a search for a public work director, we increased that to grade one because we had that individual as a director of public work and the city engineer. However, we find that we do not need to have that as a city engineer position because we can also now contract all of that out. And so we're prepared to go out and have SGR do the search again. But this year, at this time, it would be for a public work director. And so we would lower that by one degree, and we'd save that money for other purposes now.
Any questions for Steve?
We're just undoing what we did to accommodate Eric last year.
Thanks, Peter.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, that takes us to our second of participation, public participation. If you would like to speak with us, please come forward, write your name. You have five minutes. Please come forward, write your name, you have five minutes. All right. We will move on. We will now have comments from the staff.
Can I have your foot of comments, Mayor?
Mr. Tad.
No. Come on.
Chief. Chief.
Go back.
House.
Bye.
Let's go.
I will be out of the office all next week on vacation. I believe going through the Badlands over to Yellowstone, so call me if you have emergency, that I don't know if I'm reception or not. So don't take it personal if I don't answer. Don't go. And also, after the meeting sometime, I do want to touch base with some of you about the MML plans for next meeting. And I got a notice today that MML wants to be having their Northwest Regional Meeting for our area. This time is going to be in October, in Marcelline, just about an hour each way. So it's October the 18th, and I will bring this back at a later time. I just wanted you to have it, a free warning, to check your calendar, so if you want to go, it's quite a long drive, but if you want to go, we'll definitely get your signed up. I don't know what the topic's going to be yet, so as it gets a little bit closer on the job, I'm seeing this. That's all I have. I don't have anything. Well, life is for learning, and I hope coming to this morning leads to earning, I'm going to do Main Street training on Thursday, and then MML on next week. So like I said, I hope this gets me some points somewhere.
I actually don't want to be.
Not a problem.
No, no. Usually I just let it come to me.
Well, I do have a couple things. Number one, keep in mind, next month is large trash pickup, that's my baby, so I'm usually watching for it. Is Tictum, is something to do that again this year?
I haven't asked you, but I'll tell him, and he'll say yes.
I'll be there.
All right.
So get your tractor, I've had a few calls about that, if it was on the calendar, so...
Yeah, so I just want to let everyone know that, I'm, I'm like waiting for that. And the second thing is, we have some positions in our, in our city that are needing to be filled with some good, good solid candidates, and we would like for you to apply. And I'm even forward to that.
All those positions are listed on our website, and people can apply to that here in person or in meeting.
In person. Well, that's all I have. Thank you for coming to see me, and I will entertain, I mean, I have a, I will entertain